Thank you. We're ready to resume our meeting, and so we're back in order next time on our agenda. We've had various pieces of paper handed out tonight, and we're going to make sure the commissioners have sort of have that, which has passed out now, another thing to the commissioners. Before we go on in regular session to old business, which are the budget documents, at our last meeting, we had, I'd recognize Mr. King, and he had requested some information, and the school department had been good enough to provide you with that information tonight and spread it on your desk. So I would like to go ahead and handle that as we go forward before we go with our resolution agenda, because there's information that you need, that you requested, and we need to make sure that you have what you need to make a reasonable vote on the budget this year. We have our budget in two parts, being the general government budget we have pretty much dreaming on, and so we're working on the school budget, and we need to finish that so we can do these two acts together. So at this time, I'm going to recess again and recognize Mr. King. And Mr. Jones, if you would come forward, and I know we can continue our conversation that we had last week at this time, and I appreciate the information that you and Director Raplowski have shared with the commission tonight, and I know there will be some questions possibly from commissioners, but I recognize this time, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mayor. There you go. Thank you, Mayor. Continuing from last week where we were at, and I did ask Mr. Jones if, you know, the school could provide a list, and I think today, maybe sometime after lunch, there was a list presented. I think Mr. Bailey got his, maybe four o'clock, I got mine after I come on over here. So I haven't had really a lot of time to look at it. I did kind of, you know, scan through it, and, but not enough time really to, you know, digest what's in here. With that said, I know some of the other commissioners had wanted to ask some questions, and at this time, I think we'll open the floor up for the other commissioners here that maybe had questions or wanted to find out exactly what is on this list, and that way they can make better judgments, too. So if there's anybody that wants to ask questions to Mr. Jones about the list, I think, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. King. And we will open the floor up for questions. Let me kind of set the stage for where we are, Mr. Jones, and you correct me if I'm wrong, as to say how we got here. Of course, when we asked for budget proposals, the Education Department sent over a budget proposal for, I believe, eighty-nine million dollars within, and with their projected spending. And in that spending, there was eight million dollars from plus, and from the fund balance to balance that budget. We had asked for a breakdown of that, because the money that you have approved in the past for, out of the fund balances that the school system had, have generally been for one-time expenses, and as part of the budget, the opinion has been that these funds out of the fund balance, one-time funds, should be for one-time expenses, and that's why we asked, the commission asked for the list. That's where we are, where the school system is responding to your request, and they've provided that tonight. So as Dwight mentioned, we got the list today, and we know it just got to you, but if any of you have questions for Mr. Jones, I'm sure he's prepared to discuss those with you, and I appreciate the effort they've gone to to get this list, to, we don't have line item control over the school budget, but we do have a responsibility to make sure that the funding is proper, and so that's why we're where we are. So any commissioner have any questions for Mr. Jones or Mr. Raplowski? If you will just chime in. Larry, I will recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Jones, on the first page there, line item seven, one, one, zero, zero, the contact with, I mean, I'm sorry, with other governmental agencies for SROs. How many people, how many SROs are you talking about budgeting for in that number there, that five hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
I don't have, excuse me, I don't have the exact number, but I think it was probably eighteen.
I think it was eighteen, I think it was.
The, and that goes back about three years ago, when the county commission approved the SROs in each school, then county pays half, I think the shares department pays half, we pay half, and that was approved after our budget was approved, so we had to take the money that year out of fund balance, and we left it in that category. That doesn't mean you spent it out of fund balance, but we left it in that category after you approved it that first year, so that's why the five hundred and twenty thousand is there. And each year, we do the budget, I think it's important to note that we ask each department in the school system to come up with what they have a need for. We put those needs together, and at least the director of schools does that, and then the chairman of the board is somewhat involved in that. We put those needs together, we look at revenue, and then we look at the expenditures, and we look to see how much money we need to balance the budget out of all the fund balance. Last year's budget spent about five million dollars out of fund balance. We are not going to spend all that five million dollars, matter of fact, we hope we're not going to spend any of it when the books close out, if it looks that way. So that each year, we spent, we budgeted fund balance money, and it's about five million dollars, and that did include SROs, but we've never broken it down, line item to line item, like you asked for this year. We've never gone through and said, this is a fund balance issue and this one's not. We just looked at it as a total budget. So after that request was made last week, it was important for us to go back and see how we could distribute that out, and it's not just one-time expenditures. The first three percent of your fund balance has to be, has to be set aside. After that three percent, the monies can be used for other things, and most of these things are one-time expenses, and we've got that listed as that. But we're asking for about three million dollars more than we asked for last year, and we don't anticipate spending that five that we got last year, but at the same time, we need to be prepared for it.
Okay. This number, eighteen SROs, is that, is that a decrease from last year?
No, it's the same.
The same as it was last year?
Yes. Again, we just label that each year that way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank, thank, Mr. Vance.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones, I think what, I think what is normal practice has been in accounting is that when projects came at the end of the year or during the year, you all would come back and ask them to do a budget amendment, such as taking X dollar beans out of your fund balance to do different projects. And the only thing you've done this year differently is you've just put down a list of things, possible expenditures, that you're going to have to use next year, which would not require the commission to have to come back and do a resolution to amend your budget to take money out of your reserves. So is that, is that a correct statement?
That is correct, and if you'll recall, last year, we came before the county commission asking for permission to use fund balance money to pay for turf at West Ridge High School, at East High School. We'd also asked for a design for the access road to, access driveway to him to West Ridge. Altogether, on page two, page three of the document that we gave you, there's ten million, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, sixty-seven dollars that's listed for that. And that comes out of that, you heard earlier, about twenty billion dollars, or eighteen billion, or twenty-four billion, but this ten million is obligated. You'll notice that we have a column there called encumbered or paid. Everything listed is already being encumbered or paid, other than the, other than the driveway. Right now, we are in the process of getting a design, we've got a contract for a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for the design on that, and that's encumbered. We won't know the cost of that until we put it up for bid. Chris Davis will be in charge of doing that. We have purchase of bishop property, we have, we do not have a signed contract on that bishop property, but you have given us permission to spend three hundred thousand for that property. You notice also, in that column, there's a three billion dollars for the access driveway, and there's a note to the sign there that that concept was approved. We realized that once the bids go out, we have to come back and ask county commission approval to actually use the money. You approved the concept, but not the money, if I remember correctly, it was written on that resolution. You approve the money for the design, but the actual construction, we have to wait on that. And we have listed also, through your information, future capital projects for SRO money and also for other monies. We felt like it was important, we're going to be transparent, for you to see what we're looking at there, Central Middle School, we're looking at four billion dollars for new heating system for that, Sullivan Heights, we're looking at rooftop units. East High School, we're looking at CTE HVAC, we're also looking at roof replacement at the CTE program there. Sullivan Heights Chiller, three hundred thousand dollars. East High School Greenhouse, eighty-one thousand. West Ridge High School Greenhouse, eighty-one thousand. Hosting Elementary Carpet Replacement, a hundred thousand, and then Internet Connectivity, three hundred thousand. Most of this will come from SRO money two point O. We're waiting for approval on that, but that's our plan at this particular point. And then you notice at the bottom, there's three other concepts that's going to come out of SRO three point O, if that's approved, and we're asking for a concept design, I report, renovation or addition to Mary Hughes, East High School, and Indian Springs Elementary. Those are three things that we're looking at, but we can't get a design concept until we bid to the architects, because I think the federal money, we have to actually bid the architect before we can give their services, so we're asking for RFQs on that.
So let me ask another question. On page three, where it says, Sullivan High School turf, West Ridge High School turf, these are, you're showing these as items in this illustration, or this printout, that's already been approved by us?
Yes, and I was using that as an example. A few minutes ago, you said we had to come and ask commission, that was done last year. You approved so much money for the West Ridge turf and the east turf, I think it was last November, of our bounce, and you approved money for the lighting at East Middle School, and by the way, the lighting in East Middle School has been completed this past week, I believe, for the parking lot areas. The athletic lighting is still not completed, but we do have work going on. You also approved lighting for West Ridge High School, both athletics and the parking lots.
So was it a correct statement to say this document is showing what we proved in the past, and is also showing us a direction of where you're going forward?
That is, that was the intent of this, because again, you asked for transparency, and we were making every effort to show you where we were heading in the future, even though some of these things are just right now talking points when it comes to the renovation at East and renovation at Mary Hughes, and also at Indian Springs. I think it's important for you to understand.
Okay, on page one at the top of the general purpose school budget, the five hundred thousand dollar retirement incentive, that is for the teacher that's already retired, and you were giving them an early retirement incentive, so you had to put it in this appropriation to pay that out to those employees?
Yes, we had to.
So that's one one-time expenditure?
That's a one-time expenditure, we had to appropriate that in the general purpose budget. Our, the other option would have been to come to you back in May and say, well, you can transfer five hundred thousand, but we saw it as the same five hundred thousand that's going to come out of fund balance either way, so it was, we would have hit it, put it in the budget, so that you would see where it's coming from.
So let me ask just one question, a question. So basically, the budgets you all presented of the eighty-nine million, it's no new money?
That's correct.
You're covering the teachers' equalization pay inside your existing budget?
That is correct.
And that's basically by the reduction of number of schools, number of teachers that no longer you have, so you're able to absorb that cost?
Yes, we have put forty-some positions already, not filled positions, that we were, I think thirty-some came from early retirement, and then we've had some others that actually left and went to the school system that we were able not, not to use anymore. So we have not, not an exact number, but in the low forties, and we are able to cover those costs. And the teacher equalization pay plan is in the budget that you have for you, you have a budget of eighty-nine million, and that includes the teacher equalization pay plan, which is an average of the six districts in our area that I've talked about before.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vance. Anyone else have questions? I know, like I said, I know you've only had this for a while. If I could, Mr. Jones is chairman of budget committee, I'd like to talk with the commission just a minute about what the issue we're dealing with here tonight. This list of things that the Education Department has given us, I have no doubt are needed, and I have no doubt that we will need to fund them at some time in the future, or next year. The issue we're dealing with here tonight is that we're going to be looking at a tax rate to fund the budget this year, and that budget, if it's increased by the eight million dollars, even though it's not, that eight million dollars is not coming out of our tax rate, and Mr. Bailey, if I stray off, you correct me, it's not being funded by our tax rate. What we're getting at now is what are we funding with that eight million dollars that are continuing expenses? I don't think a single commissioner would say that, no, you don't need this item, because it's a one-time item, and that's what the commission has tried to get to. That's what Mr. King had asked, what in that is one-time items, and what's continuing expenses? And let me give you an example. If we have five million dollars of one-time items, I think this commission would say that's, that's a good thing, you're spending money, and that's why the commission asked for the list, but if you're spending three million dollars on things that are going to come up again next year, and you talked about the SROs, I think we're going to fund the SROs next year, but if it's not in the tax rate this year, it'll have to be there next year. Is, is that, Dr. Tannenbaum, is that clear?
Mr. Chairman, the way I understand, Mr. Chairman, the way I understand, that the school system has always funded the SROs out of their fund balance, it's been done that way for year after year. Am I correct, Mr. Jones?
That's correct, because the first year that it happened, it was actually budgeted approved, and we had to add it on, so we have continued to do that, but again, because we have been conservative in what we spent, the money has not come out.
Okay, you hold in on one thing, and I agree with, I don't disagree with that, but this eight billion dollars is going to spend down the fund balance of the Education Department to just about the minimum that they state requires. Now, can we fund it out of that next year? If it's not there, you can't. And maybe I picked a bad, a bad example of the SROs.
But we don't have to, we don't have to fund it next year, because it's not part of the maintenance of effort. If we allow them to vote in eight million dollars their fund balance, that don't mean that we have to.
Well, Mark, we can, we can, you and I can debate that, I just, what I want to do is make sure the commission understood what we're asking and why we're asking, and that is, that if there are continuing expenses in here, you're going to be asked to fund those continuing expenses. It's not the teacher raises, it's not the, the equalization of pay, that's in the budget. That's in the budget that you have approved in the budget committee. It's the eight million dollars, and how much of that's been spent on things that you will be asked upon to get next year, and that's why we asked for the list. And with that explanation, I'm going to recognize two folks who want to speak, and I'm going to recognize you, and then I'm going to put a proposition to you. Christian Brohm.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I address Mr. Bailey with a couple of questions?
I'm sure Mr. Bailey would be happy to.
He looks excited. Mr. Bailey, on the, looking over this, you know, we didn't get it till this afternoon, and everybody knows me, I like to have everything at least twenty square meters on my hands before I can review it, but after a quick once-over, a couple things that bother me are the debt payments being a one-time expense, and of course, the SROs, and instructional supplies, et cetera. If, if those are covered with this, what happens next year?
I'll answer, the debt service is clearly something that will be there next year, it's not going to be paid off for probably another five years, and some of it, some will be later than that, so it'll continue to have to be funded from some source, and if fund balance is done this year, you've got to look for where the source is going to be next year. And of course, it has been made in previous years, and may have been fund balance, or may have been out of the current revenue. That would be a matter of how a person decides to look at it, but it come out of the operational cost of those previous years. Just debt service is very clear, I believe you asked about the instructional supplies?
Yes.
That is, I can't say it's clearly that, but I believe it's something that's funded each year, has been, and is funded in this year's budget by same level, it's, that is the amount that's funded in this year's budget, so I don't expect any drop-off next year. So just continue.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Brohm. Mr. Jones, your turn now.
Thank you, Chairman, I appreciate that. I have a couple of questions, Mr. Jones. First of all, I really appreciate the information that you've provided here, and I think a week and a half or two ago, I asked you for some more information about teacher equalization thing, and I really appreciate you getting that to me, and I appreciate that very much. And I'm really glad to see that we're moving in the direction of equalization of pay, I think that's incredibly important. I, well, just a question I have, so this year, that's in the budget, that's, how being, I want to make sure I understand, basically, that it's a, this is going to be in the budget for the next couple of years as we kind of put this thing into place where basically, teachers in Sullivan County are brought up to where they should be, I mean, as a, someone who's married to a teacher, you guys will never be paid enough, so I'll just say that upfront, but I love to see that we're moving in that direction. Is this something that's going to be in the budget each year, or are you guys going to start with teachers who are, you know, thirty-year teachers, twenty-year teachers, is that where it starts, or is this across the board?
The teacher equalization is across the board, it's the, it's the average of the six systems in this area from step one all the way up through step thirty, so it doesn't treat anyone any differently than others. Now, the beginning teachers will receive less of a salary increase than the older teachers, or the more experienced teachers, maybe I should say, but somebody with twenty-five years' experience is going to get a better raise, because they have been behind. If you look at Sullivan County's. been behind. If you look at Sullivan County's salary schedule, you'll find that after the year twenty, I don't think they got another raise until maybe year twenty-five, and then it was maybe two hundred dollars a year or something of that nature. It was very minimal. But we've got some teachers that will be getting a good raise, because they've been here for twenty-five years. And I don't think anyone realizes that in one week, we lost five teachers this summer to surrounding system, and teachers who've been here profiled. And that's, it's crucial. And it's so good tonight for you to be able to put a face with the names, not the names, but positions I've been talking about since last September, when I presented to you that we were going to try to have a teacher equalization study meeting. And I invited everyone here who wanted to be part of that study to come and join us. So Mayor Bembel was able to come to the one meeting. We had three meetings. We were able to get all the data together and come up with the salary schedule. It was a one-time opportunity, and it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that we're going to have, because our purpose here is to right-size the school system, both facilities and teachers. And we're making every effort to do that. We still got a ways to go. We've got a few more positions that could be cut, but our promise was that we would not cut positions. We would cut people. We would reduce it by attrition and people. So as we have people leave, that if we can get by without using them again, or without using that position, we will continue to get some of that. Now, the question that you asked, Mr. Brothman, is it going to be in place next year? If the same salary schedule will be in place next year, our goal would be to try to find a way to move it up every two years, or every three years, or something of that nature. But the goal this year was to get the new salary schedule in place, then add four percent to it, because the state wanted everyone to get a four percent pay raise. And I know that's important to the commissioners, and it's important to the community, that our people get paid that. So we have the salary equalization scheduled in place, made, it's made up to average, then we added four percent to it. So it will be a good raise for some of the people, for many of the people. And the future, if this affects principals right now, because their salaries are tied to teacher salaries, next year, we want to look at our support staff. We weren't able to do that this year, as far as looking at what secretaries made, and maintenance workers, and things of that nature. But that is our goal for next year. So look at that and see if we need to make adjustments, or how much of an adjustment to make. We know we need to make some, but we need to see how much. And then on top of that, we've got coaches. Our coaches are underpaid. You wouldn't believe the difference it's in the amount of supplements that a coach in Bristol and Kingsport gets compared to a coach in Sullivan County. And remember, I'm almost ashamed to even verbalize, but it's critical that we look at those things.
Thank you for that answer. And I believe you've got a lot of sympathetic ears here. And if we're all here next year, I think you'll find sympathetic ears then, Mr. Chairman. And I certainly appreciate the work you've done on it. And I thank the commission, just by the reactions, saying we can approve the budget that it's in. Mr. Vance, you're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, we're, I would like to go ahead and move to resolution number one, to set the tax rate, to vote on the tax rate. Let me finish. What we're referring to is my resolution about appropriations. When we get to that resolution, if there's one amendment that needs to be made in the general purpose school fund, we can do that at that time?
Mr. Vance, I don't, I don't think you made a motion, and-
I don't understand why we're talking about appropriations, when we should be on resolution one for tax rate.
Well, we're continuing business that we started at a meeting, if you, I don't, you might not have been here.
I did, the mayor and King have met.
So I'm doing a, I don't, I don't see, I see some confusion on faces around here, so I'm going to recognize Mr. King.
Thank you, Mayor.
Cross, I'll get you in. Thank you.
There again, I'm in the same place I was last, or last week. It's like Mr. Brothman said. You know, you get something, and it takes me a while to read it, and go over it, and figure out what's going, and try to analyze, and say, well, if we do this, we'll get that, if we do, and that's where I'm at here. And this has a whole lot to do with our budget, you know. What, you know, what's going to happen next year? How much of this stuff we're going to have to, will be in our budget next year that we're going to have to fund from somewhere? Are we going to have to raise taxes? What are we going to have to do? So with that said, I'm just not ready to do this.
I try to be very liberal. I'm not going to entertain any actions like that. This body is deliberating. It's a very difficult subject. We've enjoyed working with Mr. Jones. He's done everything he can. He's gave us, he's given us information tonight. I, for one, in looking over this list, see things that I'm not comfortable, that won't be in your budget next year, and you'll be asked to fund. So I'm going to recommend that we do not vote on the budget tonight. And I will entertain your motion, Mr. King.
Thank you.
I have checked.
What's the motion?
Do we adjourn this meeting?
We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second.
Point of order.
Point of order?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we've not brought the resolutions up yet, and that's what our budget was set.
Mr. Vance?
For, Mr. Chairman.
I believe we started-
Set up three resolutions.
I believe we started this session when I said we were in recess. We have not gone back, we have not been back under the rule.
On a recess.
I'm sorry?
We have to go back in order to take a motion to adjourn.
That, that's-
And we're in recess.
That's exactly, that's exactly right. You did not say that.
I just did.
Let me get a feel for the commission. I don't get a vote on this thing. You do. You're voting on eight million dollars, that a portion of which you could well have a tax increase next year fund. I suggest we look at this, I'm going to suggest to the commission, that we look at this and not stampede, and make a vote that you don't know exactly what you're voting on. This is a list that I compiled, and you see different colors on there, and there are questions in my mind. I got this all this afternoon, as you did. There are questions in my mind as to whether we, whether those are continuing expenses or not. I personally would like to have the opinion of the control of the state of Tennessee. And it would be my effort, unless you want to pass a budget tonight, that I would ask you to look at these and see if these are allowable expenses. I don't mind. If they're allowable expenses, and we've got the money, I'm willing to do that. And we'll support doing that. But I want, I want further opinion, and I would like to ask for that from you from the state of Tennessee now. Okay, Mr. Vance, I-
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment. If we'll go back into session and vote on the resolution that Mr. King has, and we go to the appropriation resolution, if somebody wants to amend the appropriation resolution to remove the eight million dollars out of it, and then we can do it on a resolution separately, we can do that, but we can pass this budget tonight, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make, I'll make the point that one of your fellow commissioners made, you don't know what you're going to fund until you adopt the budget. And will, will the tax rate support the budgets that you're going to adopt?
Currently, yes. Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, it does. If you look at the budget, it was prepared in the resolution for the appropriations. It's in sequence with-
Mr. Vance, you just said that that budget can be amended. You just said that.
The eight million dollars in the school budget is not being funded off the property tax.
Exactly.
It's coming out of the fund balance. So when you set the tax rate, you're only doing the tax rate to fund the operational expense of the budget.
I don't disagree with that, but I'm saying that until you pass a document which is resolution number-
If you pass the resolution number one for the tax rate-
Number two.
And then we go to the appropriation. If somebody wants to remove the eight million dollars out of the appropriation resolution, and put the budget back to the school system where it was at before, and then you can get your clarification of these eight million dollar expenditures.
We don't, Mr. Bailey, is it advisable for the commission to pass the tax rate tonight?
It is a reasonable question to ask when you're using nearly nine million dollars of fund balance to balance this budget that's got a considerable increase in it this year. In previous years, the school department has used two, three, and four million dollars to balance their budget. And they've done well in doing that, been very responsible. There was money left each year, but this year, these items here appear to be things, a good portion of them, that we're going to have to fund next year. If we're saying we're taking the money, this year, we're funding those with normally, and using it to fund the rest of the budget. And we have come back next year, those items will still be there, such as the debt service items, and so forth. And some of them, I can't say for sure, but most of them look somewhat questionable, that they could very well be there next year. They have to be funded with the current budget. And the question will be, if these are coming out of fund balance, then, you know, we've had several years here where they've been coming out of fund balance, and which is kind of a strange way to look at it. Originally, they were possible, but debt service has got to be paid. We'll have to come up with money and pay it next year, play this agreement. And that's not a reasonable thing to do at this, at this point, to fund nearly nine million dollars of this year's operating budget out of it. If it's capitalized, such as, we've got some there that are capitalized. That's reasonable to consider, but not to take things such as debt service and fund that out of fund balance. It's been funded each year in our operating budget.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. I'm going to recognize, Mr. Vance, with your agreement, I'll recognize the other members of the commission that would like to speak on this. I don't know what they're going to say, but Mr. Morell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly heard what Mr. King said. He's the, I realize he's the sponsor of item number one. But also, I'm also the co-sponsor of number one, and I'd like to see this move forward tonight, one way or another.
Mr. Morell, are you talking about item number one, or the entire budget document?
Item number one.
Ms. George, you're recognized.
I'd like to ask Dan a question. When we're looking at the school budget right now, my understanding is that county commissioners, we approve the school budget as a yes or no, that we are not, as county commissioners, we are not able to control and vote line item by line item on the school budget. In the classes that we took on what our job as county commissioner was, it was, the school board was basically a yes or a no vote. Is that different, where we can pull out eight million, or not allow eight million? Is that considered a line item? I just need, I want to ask clarification.
Well, I thought Commissioner Vance made a good point. We quite often, at random times during the year, vote on allocations from surplus money for the school board. We just did that for them to buy that property across the street. So I understood what Commissioner Vance was saying. He was saying, pull out the part of the budget that has, that's coming from surplus balance, and vote on it separately. You know, I mean, yes, there is this principle that we cannot line out on the school board budget, but one is, part of their budget is funded with tax revenue, but yet in this case, part of their budget is funded with fund balance. You know, I, you know, I don't know. I think Commissioner Vance's point has merit to it. I can't say that I've ever researched it that way, but it seems to ring true.
Thank you. And then if Commissioner Morell needs a second, I repeat, now if I would coach, co-sign on with you or second your motion.
I think the sponsor still has control of the, of the resolution, and that's Mr. King. And we're in recess, and that's not a proper motion in recess. Let me clarify my disagreement that Mark and I had. I don't disagree with Mark. My disagreement is, I'm not sure this body is ready to vote. Now, he has given you an alternative, and you could vote for it, and then take it out next week. It just seems to me that if you take this list home with it, you might have a question. And so I don't disagree with what Mark said, and we can vote on it any way the commission wants to. But the fact is, I just sense some discomfort with folks at the break that I've talked to that didn't know, they had questions about whether it was continuing expenses. As I say, if they're not continuing expenses, I would make the motion to adopt it. So, and what we're doing now, is trying, I'm trying to get to fill the commission. We'll go back in session, and I'll, I'll recognize the sponsor of item number one, and then we can deal with it as such. Mr. Cross?
I have one question about, and this has been on my mind, and I was waiting until we got to the resolutions to talk about this. We're in recess, so I'll just ask now. As far as our private act we adopted is concerned, it went into effect July one, according to the act itself. But are we under that now, even though this entire budget process was done before July one? This vote is now after July one. How does that affect us?
You want to address that?
That was for Mr. Street.
I thought it should be.
I apologize. I should have said Mr. Street.
I'm sorry. Ms. Street?
Yes, I'm of the opinion that we, it does not go into effect July one, so we've been operating under the old statute. And we will continue to operate under the old statute through this budgetary process.
Thank you. And I also agree with Ms. George and Mr. Morell that we should move on this now.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Mr. Ackert, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. Trying to sit back and try to figure out all this is, man, I may need to go back to school. But I don't think, I mean, look, we've been dealing with this for months. I want to thank Chairman Jones for giving us all this information, and it's kind of a plan. And as someone mentioned to me when I walked out earlier to take a break, he said, you know, you talked about transparency since day one you've been sitting down here. And that's all I've tried to do, you know, because this is the taxpayers' money that we're trying to allocate. We're not trying to spend it, we're trying to allocate. That's why this is called appropriations. And I don't know if we come back for another meeting, it's going to change anything. I truly believe that eight point seven nine nine zero seven, sorry, I flipped the last one, does have a lot of questions in it, absolutely. Because as you all know, I love to make fun of copier leases, but those are allocating funds from future budgets that affect what we do, you know. And so that eight point seven, almost eight point eight million, could affect future budgets. But at the same time, we kind of have the general realm of what the budget is going to be. The equalization pays in there, all the pay for the other departments are in there. So I absolutely have no issue voting on this budget minus line thirty-nine thousand, and give them the eighty-one million tonight, till we figure out that eight point eight, and if it's going to affect the future budgets. And then that's an easy add-on at a later date, in my opinion. Because, I mean, look, we all have other jobs, you know. We have things to do, but this is so important, we've got to get it right. And if we're worried about eight point eight million, which we should do, because that is a lot of money, on the tax rate, that's all about twenty cents. I mean, it's four fourteen times ten, double it, is that right? Yeah. So, yeah, we need to figure out, because if you look at the sheet, it's got yellows, it's got greens, it's got oranges all over it, you know, whether they're not, whether they're reoccurring expenses. So, yeah, when it comes to it, I have no problem with someone trying to make the amendment, or motion, or whatever. Pull that out, approve the budget for the eighty-one million, I think Mark's kind of what we're getting at, and then we can figure that part out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ackert. Well, you know, there's one way for us to decide what we want to do. And I think Mr. King had made a motion- And I think Mr. King had made a, a motion out of order to adjourn, and he's, uh, because we are in recess, it can be. And so the way to figure out what you want to do tonight is that I will recognize Mr. King on item number one. And if he desires to make a motion, he will have the floor. And then you can vote on it, and the majority will prevail. Uh, if you're comfortable with voting to set the tax rate tonight, I'm sure Mr. King is prepared to adv- advocate that, he's sponsoring it. But if you're not comfortable...
No.
Are we taking it in session?
No.
Well, I, I, I'll recognize you when we go back in session, and, uh, you'll have the floor. But, uh, but we'll vote on it. And the majority will prevail, and we will go from there. See how, how we do this. If, if you are comfortable tonight, uh, with the explanations you've got, and all your questions are answered, uh, we'll go there, it's not a problem. We're gonna come back anyway, uh, we may go on to number two. Okay, we're back in session. You know, King, you're recognized.
Excuse, excuse me. Mayor, I had, I did. I'm in the red light, did you hear that?
John, I'm sorry, we're gonna go back in recess. I, I had you turned on, and then I'm gonna ask Dan for appropriate position.
How could you miss me?
I'm sorry?
How could you miss me?
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The bud- the budget committee and entire commission has done a lot of work, that we've put in a lot of effort and energy to get to this point. And the school department has jumped through every hoop that we've, that we've given at, at this point. In the, the reaction you, you hear from the folks, um, if, if this goes to a vote to adjourn, I'd like to encourage everybody not to vote to adjourn. And my reason why is, um, we have, we have one job, and that's to, that's to move forward with the business of the county. And the folks here tonight, when you hear that response, that's not a position of anger, that's a position of hurt. A lot of them, I'm, I'm sure some of them have taken time off work to be here. There's probably a hundred other places they'd rather be. I've talked to a couple, a couple back there, this is, this is a date night for them. Who said romance is dead? But that's, uh, that's first John's second opinion. I just want to encourage everyone to, uh, move forward with this evening, if you do. That's in order, so thank you.
Mr. Ackert, thank you, and, uh...
Let me, let me, like, you know, before we...
Believe me, I don't want to pass this... Not that's great. You're, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. The only problem with this, if we spend that eight million dollars, and it's obligated right here, I mean, it's here, that's going to spend down our fund balance. And then if all this is reoccurring, then next year, we're gonna have to pick this up next year and raise taxes. That's the only way that we can cover it. So that's, that's what, that's what we're basically, we're gonna do, is pass it from this year, let's go next year, and we'll... And also, another thing that we need to look at, by September, we passed a resolution that we were going, uh, adopt twelve cents this year. But we've got, you know, we've had reappraisal, and that's gonna come into it. So that's something, you know, we haven't even talked about. That's one, another reason I don't think we're ready to vote. I do not think we're ready to vote, because there's things that we, we need to do to get ready to vote. And I sure don't want to do something in here and make a, a big mistake that we're gonna have to live with two, three years down the road. Let's get it right, you know, if we can't do it tonight, let's do it next week and, and get it right. So when we're done with this, we're done with it, and we don't have to come back and do all these amendments and stuff. You know, who, you know, who's gonna do this, and who's gonna? Let's, let's have it in concrete tonight, and, and come back next week, and nail it down, and be done with it, and do it right. And if we can't do that, then, I'm sorry, this, this process, uh, like you, like John said, we've been going on over this for how many months now? And, you know, we, we did, we, you know, a lot of it, we didn't have information from the state to make a, a, a judgment. You know, we've asked the school, and, and they come up with their information. And I really don't, I can't decipher a lot of it, you know, getting it in my head once a, but, you know, they did, they gave it to us. I wish we would have had a little longer time to, uh, to look at it, but, you know, that's the way it is, and we have to live with it. But I don't want to do something that'll jeopardize what we're gonna do in the future. And again, something else that I, I've thought about, our order of our resolutions. I think number three needs to come first, and then number two comes second, and sets the tax rate after we've done the first two. Our nonprofits, are we fine with that? Is everybody fine with where we're at on nonprofits? I don't know. Is there something somebody wants to take out? Appropriations, is there something in there that we need to take out? Once we do all that, then I think we're ready to set a tax rate. But I don't think we're ready right now to do it. And if somebody can answer all those questions, then I'll vote for it. But I haven't heard the answers to those questions. That's where I'm, I'm done.
Okay, let me, uh, recognize Mr. Street, and I, and I, uh, and then you, Mr. Vance. Mr. Street, you, you had to come in, I probably, I might have a question, but go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, I'm further thought on Commissioner George's question. That's awful risky. I'm not sure that, that we can go there and... The way I understood the question was, can we separate out that eight million, nine million dollars, and vote on the rest of it and, and, uh, separate the eight to nine million off to the side and cover it later up, you know, on front of the...
That would be my question, where are we and how would we do that under your plan?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that that couldn't work, but there may be money in there for the electric bill. I mean, you know, I, I just don't know that we can do that, particularly on such short notice. That's, can, can we not, can we not go to the state and get an answer, and then we will know for sure?
Well, let me, uh, let me ask Dan, Dan, if you'll go ahead and punch your button one more time. Dan, did, did you just advise us that it's questionable? That we could amend that out sometime?
I think you can, you can reject the school budget. I, I'm just gonna default back to the basic, which is you approve it or you reject it. I, I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but, like I said, I don't know what's in that eight million. It may be the superintendent's salary, and you definitely can't run a school system without the superintendent. So I, you know, it's just too hard to answer that question on this pro per moment. So I, I would default back to you either approve the school board budget or you reject it. Now, you know, there, in the statute, it talks about approving the school board budget separately. So I think you can do that, but I, I, I just want to, to say that I'm not sure you can pull out the eight million and set it aside and approve the rest of the school board budget and talk about the eight million later. I, I think that's got potential for creating a serious problem.
Uh, well, let me make sure I understand, and I want to make sure the commission understands. If, if we pass the resolution, uh, number two, the resolution authorizing appropriations, you don't think that we can, your opinion is we can't pull out a portion of the school budget. Uh, but your opinion also is that we could adopt the general county budget and school budget at separate times.
Well, saying we can adopt them at separate times, that would be implied in what I said, but no, that's not what I said. What I said was you can reject the school board budget and not deal with the rest of the budget. I don't know, I had that same question myself studying on it today. Could you reject the school board budget and pass the rest of the county's budget? It would seem that you could, and I would be, I would tend to believe that you can. They are, the statute does say they can be voted on separately. So what I'm saying is, I don't think you can pull out the eight million and separate it and approve the school board budget without approving the eight million, point number one. Can you, can you reject the school board budget across the board? Yes. Can you reject the school board budget and approve the rest of it? Well, you have to set the tax rate. Uh, you know, I don't know that you can do that either. Those are pretty serious questions.
They are, they're very, very deep questions. Thank you, Dan, uh, Mr. Vance, and then Mr. Cross.
Uh, this question's from Mr. Bay, that when the resolution was prepared for the tax rate, did resolution from September ever come into play of, of, uh, preparing that resolution? Do we need to rescind this resolution that we, that we adopted in September, instead be further resolved that the sole and county commissioners support the building of jail facility and issuing bonds hereby pledged to fund the indebtedness of setting additional twelve cents or the equivalent amount of twenty-one, twenty-two tax rate? And if that's so, it, based on the number above the certified tax rate, the tax rate should be two dollars and forty-three cents?
I think Mr. Street had addressed that today. Dan had, uh, I think Dan addressed your question, Mark.
Yeah, yes, we have our, I just got through saying we need to set the tax rate. So I, I was including that in what the discussion is. But, no, I think we have already set the tax rate. We set that in September. Now, can we change it? Yes.
So this resolution that Mr. King has should be reading two dollars and forty-three cents instead of two dollars and forty cents?
No, he, he, he wanted the resolution to read the way he wrote it.
And it may not be, because I think this resolution is passed by sixteen commissioners over IDA's resolution.
Uh, Mr. Street, I, I think you addressed, you addressed that question. I tell, I don't want to argue with the commissioner, go ahead.
Uh, I, I, I think it's just implied in Commissioner King's resolution that if it, if the tax rate gets set at lower than what this was passed in September, it implies that the September resolution has been rescinded. I'm comfortable with that. I, I think everybody in here would be comfortable with that. But technically speaking, that if you're gonna set it at a different rate, should the September resolution be rescinded? Yes. I mean, you can't have both of them. But by implication, by passing one that's a different rate, the implication is that the September one was rescinded. Now, are you saying that the September one can't be rescinded? No, it can be. We can never tie our hands, I, I would never take that position.
Well, let me ask this question, Mr. Street. If we can sit here and we can adjust or, or change the tax rate as a resolution, why can't we go to the appropriation resolution on schools and do an amendment to it if the, if the sponsor of the resolution would agree to reduce the eighty-nine million nine fifty-nine by X amount of dollars and approve it as is? I don't understand why that can't be done. That's why I was trying to get off of resolution one, to let the debate and discussion to go to the appropriation resolution, but we keep going back to the appropriation resolution.
Well, let, let me answer that the best way I know how. That's a very, very specific question, and it is a very serious question. Here is what I think the answer to that is. You either pass it or you reject it. But at a certain point in time, come August thirty-first, if it's not passed, it reverts back to maintenance of effort from last year. So there is an end to it.
Okay, but their budget, the way they presented it to us, and the way we projected revenues of property taxes and sales tax collection, we met the maintenance of effort requirement. Where the budget for the school system came in and asked for the ability to take eight million out of the reserves does not have anything to do with the maintenance of effort. We're still meeting that maintenance of effort. So the appropriation resolution that I have on the floor, as long as it meets the appropriation or meets the maintenance of effort requirement, then that's all we have to comply with. That's why I'm saying let the county commission decide if they want to pull the eight million dollar products out. It can be brought back in at a later time, but approve the budget, approve the tax rate, approve the nonprofits, and we have a budget.
I, I believe you said you could do that, and I do believe you can amend your, your resolution, Mark. If you, if you, if that's what you want to do, when do we get, when do we get, when do we get to that? I think we can, yeah, I think we can do that.
No, no, I said I thought you couldn't do that.
And so you asked about a vote, if you want to amend the, the appropriation resolution, any resolution on the floor can be amended if the sponsor agrees to it or they get two people's votes to agree to amend it, and, and majority of the commissioners vote for it.
Dan, what's your...
Oh, I agree with that, I said, but you're getting off the point. The question that I understand that you're talking about is can you amend the school board budget that's proposed? And my response to that question is no, you cannot.
Mr. Vance, I... Mr. Street, I believe we can amend the bottom line of the school board. We can't amend any portion of the, um, any line item. Mark, uh, you agree to that. We can't amend the line item, but we can amend the total dollar allocated to the school system. You agree?
That's, that's what we all read that before, Mr. Chairman.
Not the way I read it, no. You reject it or you pass it. If you reject it, and August thirtieth comes along, you, you, um, end up back at a certain set amount.
That is if we violate the maintenance of effort.
No, and that, now, I'm not talking about maintenance of effort. I'm talking about the statute on how you, what it says. Says you pass it or you reject it, you send it back. You can send it back with a recommendation that we will approve this if you will, sure, but you can't pass it or amend it. You reject it or you approve it.
But we can't amend my resolution on the appropriation.
Not for the school board, you can't, no. Not the way I read the statute.
I, I was under a different impression, but I, I understand what you're saying on the private...
So if it comes here to this floor, it's fine, unless we send it back to the board of directors.
Dan, are you quoting on the private act or is it general law?
I'm quoting on the current fifty-seven ad- budget act that we've been operating under for, forever, since I'm in here.
Okay, that's... Okay, uh, Mr. Cross, you're recognized.
That was just my question, Mr. Chairman, was what was the statute he kept quoting? That was exactly my question, thank you, sir.
Okay, uh, if you are going with us now, we're gonna vote on that, and I'll, I'd love to ask budget now. If you have that kind of comfort. Uh, you can pass the budget, and, but King, I, I know there's reluctance on your part, uh, but, uh, you are responsible for resolution number one, and I'm gonna call, and when I go back in session, I'm gonna call on you. And, uh, you can either move adoption of number one, or you can, you'll have the floor.
Hello? Can I ask a question?
Any, any questions while we're in recess?
I got one question. I got a question.
Okay.
I got a question.
You're, you're recognized, you're, you're my son.
Okay. Could we go three, two, one on the resolutions and, and do our, our nonprofits appropriations? And if, if we want to do something with appropriations, then we can set the tax rate.
Let, let, let me, uh, let me try to keep us in, in the middle of the road now, the digits, before a parliamentary conference. Do I, if we have a, a motion to do that, they can vote on whether they want to. But we generally, we generally do that as a request of a sponsor.
That's the way we did it last year, three, two, one.
And, and I would say without objection, we will roll. resolution three to... Two, three, and one. And I will say without objection, if there's an objection and we have three commissioners, raise your hand, then we'll vote on that. So I'm...
Two, two, three, one, right?
That's, that's what, that's what the sponsors are, are looking for, so, uh, Dan, I, I've still got a few moments of, uh, we're going to go back in session and I'm going to recognize Mr. King, you're recognized.
I don't have resolution number two.
Well, we, we're going to need a request to reverse the order of the agenda.
Right, okay, I'm going to make a motion and we change the order of the, uh, the direction we're going with the, uh, resolutions. We want to do two first, three, and then number one.
Okay, uh, he has requested that we do that and we have objection to his request. Raise your hand if you, if you have objection. You don't have an objection to the request. So the request is to call a resolution number two, then resolution number three, and then resolution number one. Any objection? Okay, we're going to do that and to allow me to confer with Dan. Um, and I'm sorry to keep you here, but we want to do this right because we're dealing with people's money and, and I want to do, we want to do what the commission wants to do. You want to vote on this tonight, so we're going to vote on it. So let's recess for ten minutes while I confer with Cam. Be back, be back as...